All right. We're gonna get going here. We have a board meeting mid five thirty, so we're gonna get moving there.
No, that's.
You all join us in the pledge. Bye over the corner.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under our God, in this small, with a little reading.
Awesome.
Right.
Oh. You got a full house tonight, don't you? It's got a horrible year.
Yeah, I know, we're gonna begin with.
So I'll call the select board meeting to order, Dick, and you wanna call as your acting chair. You wanna call your meeting and then you guys have your.
Yeah.
Elections and whatnot, so, okay, all right, so I'll, I'll call the, they just got a select board to order or joint. Select Board Budget Committee meeting for November nineteenth, you're missing.
Yeah.
He is not here yet, so, okay, I was gonna say my last minute, so we're good and then, okay, Dick's all yours.
Okay, I, I'm the, I'm the chair at this moment because. We haven't had a new election since last, okay, yeah. Yeah, so. We're going to be looking for a, a, a chair, vice chair and a secretary, so I'll take. Nominations of speaker, wanna do them one at a time?
I move the, Dick, the chair again, you, Dick.
I'll say that. You have a second for that, you said, I said, yeah.
All right, thank you, Larry. Um, anybody else? We have nominations for that, yeah. Okay, all in favor? One. All right, thank you, vice chair. It has been Karen. There, at this moment, is a little question as to whether or not Karen's gonna continue. I hope she does. But I thought I should tell you that out of all fairness to.
Can we hold off until we find out for sure?
Yeah. Yeah, I just don't let anything happen to me between now and then and we'll, we'll be all right.
Protect your health, hey.
Yeah, I would think, is that okay with everybody if we just, if we pause? Right, unless are there other nominations for vice chair? Hearing none, okay, let's, let's move on then. Uh, secretary. And the room gets very quiet. Well, it gets very quiet. I'll, I'll point out, it's a, it's a pretty simple task here. Because we have, we have some expert and very competent clerical staff. Uh, behind us, but, but we are, we are obliged to have somebody who inherits the badge of secretary. Nomination from somebody.
I just do it separately.
Great title to put on your resume.
Yeah, right, yeah.
You don't have to bring donuts.
Well, that was the most important part.
I was thinking I could do, when was that, I'm sure you were volunteering for what?
I heard a volunteer.
I heard a volunteer. He understands the critical part.
I, I think since we've had excellent clerical recording in the past, I would like to continue with that, repeat it. And nominate Leslie Wasaki.
Okay.
If she's willing, that's fine.
You're willing, okay. Um, and is there a second?
I'll second that too, just questioning whether the charter has a non-committee member being appointed as a. Well, it's just the charter that's driving the, the need for the.
Yeah.
Typically, your, your, your person not gonna be outside of the committee per se.
Yeah.
We have, we've arranged before, but, you know, should be someone on the committee that be appointed.
Can I make a suggestion? I'm not a resident of Dan Westcott either. Um, can one of you guys be the secretary and then that will give this? Minute taker, the person to give it to the secretary? Is that, then, there's not a lot, it's literally just.
Completed a minute.
The reader of the minutes.
Position, all right, Mary? Second for that?
Second, sorry, Mary. We'll be here all night if we wait.
I will not ask who's against. Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Mary.
Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, also, yeah. I think you should do a quick, quick introduction, there's new faces in the room, which is great. To do some quick introduction, we can just go around and I'll start, Daryl Fraser, board chair and. Andy Dorton, town manager.
Tom Anderson, select board.
Uh, Dan Hunter, select board.
Susan McAllister, alternate budget committee.
Daryl Day, select board.
Leslie Wasaki, deputy clerk, et cetera. Chair of the treasurer.
Larry Sidlina, Dan Westcott.
Leah Puckey and Dan Westcott.
Mary Devlin, budget committee.
Gary Rosenthal, budget committee.
County magistrate, budget committee.
Shari Sage, budget committee.
Dick McLean, budget committee.
Yeah, you see some new faces. We've had a pretty limited amount of time, just because we do have a five thirty board meeting, so Andy, you've got a pretty tight. Uh, agenda you wanna run through, well.
Want to take from here, man?
Great. So the topic you have tonight, just meant to kind of do some talking points, I shared the agenda a little week ago or so. And the goals of, you've done your election of officers, just review at the moment, review and providing a kind of a draft. Schedule for the budget process. And. Be able to have an opportunity to talk about. I think most of you have seen or have now since asked for, do you get a copy of the budgets for you? And so had a chance to hopefully see the budget, if there's things we know now that we have questions about in terms of how we presented it or. If you think there's some additional things you'd like to see in there, that'd be helpful. And what, you know, now, before we get into it, would be a good time to share some of that. And in the strategic plan, I can just share kind of where we're at, who's at the moment. And so with that, that first page in the packet, and that's stapled, and it's a draft schedule. It's just kind of building on what it's been the last few years, but to throw that out there, folks can have a chance to look at, there'll be. Confirmation today, but if any conflicts or dates around holidays and such. And I think the only significant change in there. At the moment for this year, it's early February. Do the presentations by the departments. Generally over a three-week period where we're doing one meeting a week and you can get through as many as you can. And don't know if the group would prefer to see that period of time. Trump and try and do them all in one week, do them one day, or keep them the way they're, they're at. And the benefit might be to provide more opportunity for discussion over February and March. Alternatively, if we go to the group, if you add, and again, typically it's three weeks of what it took, or three meetings what it took to get those done. And but if you do that over a weekly period, you know, you, you've got five weeks effectively to. To go through and you kind of come up with your recommendations, unless you wanna meet more frequently than once a week. And so think about that, uh, for the preference, the clothing, we try and do it in one week's period, potentially rather than the three.
And how long are each of those meetings expected to be?
I think we're typically about an hour and a half or two hours, it's kind of the most, most folks typically don't. Even one sitting unless, again, the group wants to consider something's. Longer for fewer meetings.
When, when you, when you say one week's period, you're saying so every, every night of, of one week?
Uh, well, we've been able to do it in about three meetings, and so I guess it would be three days, whether it's in one week or. Yes, and do it, we've been saying to do three meetings instead of.
I'm sorry, I'm not following. There's three, three nights in one week?
Yeah, yes, February ninth, tenth and eleventh.
The September tenth of February?
Get them done earlier, and then spreading it out through the, uh, through the month of February, it gives us, you know, or everybody some more time. Basically, month of February, any of, anything comes up, any questions, so. So again, this is a proposed schedule, uh, we're just encouraging everyone, take a chance to look through that, see if there's any major conflicts for you personally and then. Uh, we can come back at a meeting. Dick, I know I suggested at one point maybe a meeting in December for the budget committee. And so you can get more in-depth if we want to before we get into finished product and then have a question, so if there's things we can find out ahead of time. That'd be better, so again, not expecting an approval or denial of this today, just providing you.
Uh, with a thought. When would you need to know?
Um, mid-December. I guess the, I assume that that'd be the biggest change that we'd be looking at and. Unless there's lots of other things that are jumping out at folks at the moment that you wanna top of our.
And, and what time of the day were you anticipating?
Would be up to the committee. And the board, for the presentation to the committee and board, and if you ask the staff, they prefer a afternoon probably, but acknowledging that most folks here work. And we typically do those in the evening, whether it's four thirty or five seventy.
Would be the goal of that meeting? It's December three, what, what's?
We're talking about February ninth, tenth and eleventh.
No, he, he.
Well, I know.
December third.
It's a proposed date that I had thrown out that, um, would look to the chair to call a meeting if he feels inclined to do so, that's a date I had proposed. And just so there's a chance to come back and. And have the committee come back together and talk more about the schedule and other items that we don't get to tonight in the hour that we have.
I've never been a fan of having a meeting simply for the sake of having a meeting. Okay, which just happens too often in life. Uh, if, if there were, if there were a specific point, purpose to that meeting, but then would to.
Well, you need to appoint a vice chair, for example. You need to appoint a vice chair, for example.
Okay. That can be done at the beginnings of whatever the next meeting is. Yeah?
Right, I'd agree, I'm free.
Well, I know, from my perspective, I would appreciate input, we have a lot, we have four new members on the budget committee this year, so an opportunity for them. In the group to talk collectively, if there's changes in the presentation of the budget, I'd welcome that opportunity. Uh, sooner rather than later, because we're already starting to update worksheets and such now. And so by, by the time we get to January, we're typically. In it, the format's kind of set in, in some regards for us. And so earlier in December, from my perspective, would be helpful if there are some changes in additional information, so we have time internally to do that. It was just a proposed date, and that, Dick, I mean, you know, it's something that you can, you and I can talk about if you feel that we.
We don't, we won't have the budget for spend. Well, I, I will make the observation. Especially with new members, there are always. When there's a new member, there are always, it turns up in the course of meetings. There are questions that need to, it, it, it get answered or, or a bit more in-depth explanation to somebody who's never really looked at it. As to what it is or why we, why we do it that way. It would give us an opportunity to do that, the other thing is. That very often, historically, the town manager has gone ahead and worked a budget with his department heads. Without hearing from the, the townspeople, which in this instance is, is us. Uh, by the time we, often by the time we come together. We're looking at a draft budget, whether we approve it or not. A meeting on December three would give us. Any, any one of you, us, an opportunity to. Talk to Andy, to tell Andy. What we do or do not want to see this year.
Dick, I would, I would like, I would vote for a December third meeting, just because there's a lot of new people on this, this budget board. And it would give us an opportunity to get, decipher what Andy's passed out here tonight and come up with their own questions and, and. Talk amongst ourselves what our expectations are, and Andy can hear what our expectations are, rather than him form something and bring it back to us and then have us tear it all apart or. Or raise a controversy over it, I would think input going into it would be better than after the fact. Like closing the door after the horses out.
Yeah, up, up until just a few years ago. We, we didn't have this meeting. We didn't come together and, and you know, and that, that just in my mind was not working. So we started to, started to meet in the fall, uh, even if just briefly. With, with Andy.
To be mindful of time, can I just propose that, yes, we will keep the December third meeting and.
Yeah.
For those who were, what would be the best, um.
So I'll take that as a, as, as, as a motion.
Four thirty is good for me. Yeah, four thirty is good. Gary, you good for this?
I'm good.
What's your minute?
That we meet on December third at four thirty?
Yeah.
Um. I have a good number of seconds, so, uh, but I'll, I'll call a vote on the motion to yes, meet on December three. Let's separate that from the time, just three seconds, all in favor of meeting on December three? And.
Oh, good, abstain.
Okay. Abstain, why?
Cause I'm still not clear why, I, but going back to today, I mean, I understand. I thought we were going to discuss, if Andy feedback tonight. Express concerns that we have about the budget tonight. If we're not gonna do that, then okay, then I see the purpose of having December third.
I don't think there's time to do that.
There's not time to.
We generally do that separate, too, they, we separate the board and the, and the, and the budget committee, the rest of the meetings separately, so. Yeah, this was a good opportunity for your guys to get together on the third.
My impression is, is that tonight is largely a chance to listen.
To, to set the dates and, and rather than housekeeping.
I guess I was hoping also, not only to share with Andy, the select board issues that I have with the budget. Going forward.
Well, we'll have that time, once we get. The format down, how we're gonna operate, we come together as a group and, and, and how we're gonna operate moving forward. That's, that's why I take December third as a.
Yeah.
Works, work, the actual workings of the group, the beginning of work.
I've got yeses, I'll take that as a no, if I may, okay, abstention is not really correct.
Okay.
There's no, there's no conflict there, okay? So we will meet on December third. I've heard four thirty as a start time. Said out loud, uh, so. Um, and probably what, Andy, about an hour? Or so, we're not conflicting at that point with the selectments meeting, right?
No, we'll just need to, there's a, is there a plan for that night?
Probably.
First Monday of the month, is that?
Not at stake.
No, December first, this is Monday, December third's almost.
December third's a Wednesday, if you don't have, like, would be in that night, we'll, we'll select boards, if you wanna meet earlier, we can just do the hour before the board meeting.
So four thirty to five thirty, is a recommendation. Um, is just. Focusing on, on. That which everybody feels they need to know before we actually give them the scene, the draft. Write your motion for a time.
I made a motion that we will meet at four thirty on December third, I think.
Okay.
Also.
All right, in favor of four thirty? And. No objections. Okay.
Uh, moving through. There's some of the other documents in your packet there, sharing, review, last year's presented, um, a five-year outlook of the capital reserve plan. And that was sort of re summarized by reserve accounts that we have. One page there, and. The next couple of pages is something we're working on internally. And to share with the departments, you know, for capital budget planning or requests. And this happens to be just a template pulled together, and Cheryl will help fill it out and see how it works. So. Took me a second.
That part, really?
I've been just pouring water, I can fill the boxes of work.
We have an RFP written up for this.
Yes, your budget item we cut was the napalm, what is a wellness, Carol's napalm, what's a wellness food?
I know, I spelled that wrong, I was like, oh, crap.
So this is just more to share with you, like, what we have internally, or how to use it internally for us to think about, what do we have coming up for capital projects? And the next, I didn't remember these, I don't know what that is. And you go a couple more pages, there's a, what, grayed and white. spreadsheet there that shows the municipal building, and there's a column, capital needs of the next about ten pages or so. It's a list of all of the projects and capital costs that were presented last year that are behind the. The numbers that you see in that summarized document, and I mean, last year, there's been the first year I shared that full list in the book, and it's kind of those longer pull-out pages. And but it gave folks the ability to see all of the things that are kind of behind why the budget reserve request were what they are. And where it might be trending based on the input in the, into the list. And so again, this is meant just to show you what, what's in there, and online we do have, uh. A PDF stat, and well, any of you still have your budget books from last year, we'll just need your binders back preferably at some point, you can keep the pages if you want. Try to remove them with each year. And again, just to look into what's, what's in each of those reserve accounts for projects, looking ahead. Any questions on? On that at the moment?
So this is Karen, this is not a rehash, it's a direct.
Perhaps sometimes when we, we know about projects, but we see them all listed out, and every. Capital-sized equipment, whether it's by the useful life or the cost it's going to be to replace. You know, every section, every road, I mean, see that all on one list, all of a sudden starts to be a pretty long list, you realize. Just what we need to be track of and what that replacement cycle looks like.
Andy, so the items highlighted in gray are the ones that were. Traveling for this.
Those are gray, just to alternate the break between.
Oh, okay. No, for us.
Yeah. No questions on that, and just providing, I'll see it, and what we have, apparently. It goes out ten years, and you see in the PDF or the budget books from last year, try and show you where to go ten years, the summary is just looking at the five years, you know, ahead. Um, on that Sunday night page, but we are trying to get kind of that longer view, so you know. The thought was, well, let's cut back that reserve account this year, you're kind of seeing where we're looking ahead, you know, and it just means kind of chipping against. Some of these could be up for discussion as to whether they're on the list, some of them aren't up for discussion, we have to do, it's just a matter of when we do. Uh, beyond that, step back, the, the strategic plan, the select board is working on a strategic plan, and that's coming on the yield of a, a town and state-approved comprehensive plan. And so we're trying to take that and, and make, kind of, I keep calling it operationalizing that, and so. We understand internally and the budget process will bring those projects and initiatives forward. Uh, but someone's gotta do them, somehow we've gotta pay for them, some things we can do with existing resources, some things might require other resources. And there's things that are identified in there that staff do have to do, some things fit within the mission of the company or the, the vision of that. Some things are just, we have to do them by state law or something, and don't fit nicely, the, one of those things, and so the strategic plans. An attempt to kind of look at all of what staff are doing and how our time is kind of spent and, and give the board some. Guidance looking ahead, give the budget committees some guidance, and give the town some a sense of like. What are we doing, why are we doing it, and we get our tax bill and we're paying three thousand dollars or four thousand dollars or more. Where's that going, and, you know, it's easy enough to look at the pie chart and say, this much, this percent goes to the school, this percent goes to the town, this percent goes to the county, but within the town. What are we accomplishing, where are we headed in that strategic plan, I'm hoping we can start to bring that into the budget process and think about when we're up. Last year was what, twelve percent? And we say we can't afford that, we can look back and say, okay, what projects or initiatives do we wanna hold off on right now? Because that's, that's what it ends up meaning, just cutting the money isn't as simple as that, sometimes it is that simple, but it means we're gonna have a reduction in service that was planned or. Projects are gonna get pushed another year, and that's fine, but kind of trying to draw that connection to that impact as we think about it going forward.
So when will you be doing that?
We're doing it now, so just going through the review, the kind of that budget impact right now, and then you just circle back with staff on my check on that, and then. So we're, we should have that be able to be approved, you know, before the budget process is done, I just don't know if it'll be as strong leaving the budget process, but you should be able to have it and kind of look at it and get a sense for where we had it. Started that in earnest, I think this fall? Yeah. Like summer, early fall. There were three, three meetings on it, yeah. That's, um, at staff level now, where staff is going through it and see what they're, yeah, that's what. I'm excited about sort of the staff. We can check off whatever, but. Yeah, I mean, just kind of like, a reality check of, of resources available, trying to make sure staff, where do you see yourself in this, do you wanna leave this, do you wanna be involved in it? This doesn't apply to kind of anything personally or, or within your God's script, and how do we fill that gap, because it's still a need identified by the community, so. I'm just trying to mar, marry all that together within the budget limitations. Uh, the last page in the packet. And I try to, we're at the point where some things are coming into focus and that'll have an impact for next year's budget. And our health insurance is one of them, that usually, it just came to us. Weeks ago, I'm sure, and so we know that's across the board, a nine percent increase on our premiums. Um, I'm grateful it was below ten percent, because I think the state put out a twenty-two or four or six percent increase back in October on, on the private plans. And I was really hoping it wasn't getting that high, but it's, it's not, nine percent is still high. And, but that, so that's one that we know, the COLA, uh, two point eight percent, and this year's budget, we had estimated a three percent, so we're slightly under. On what that announcement was effective January. Um, retirement plans, that's set to have a new percentage or. Contribution reset to three-year period that they look at and set that, and sometimes it's different for each of those fiscal years. And they have it mapped through FY twenty-six, which I think aligns with our budget, and but. We haven't seen, and I haven't seen that yet.
Should be in the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks.
I don't imagine that necessarily changes a huge amount, but one percent or two percent still means something to us. And that's what it ends up changing. And for the acronym, back up, sorry, back up to the health insurance, MMEHT, that's Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust. And that's a, kind of an offshoot from Maine Municipal Association, and so it's a, it's an insurance program and group that represents. And it's made up of a board of. Select board members or counselors and managers and finance people, so it's a group for municipal government. And so it's not, you know, for those that aren't aware of that, it's not a, just a group out there at. Just trying to pad their pockets, so to speak, it represents us, and so that's, that comes up often as, well, can we shop it around? And certainly could, and it comes up with a lot of colleagues of mine, listserv. Who, who'd be going to, who'd be looked at in, you know, nine times out of ten, and it always comes back that that's the most competitive rates they can find. And but just putting that out there, which information if you're not aware of what that is.
Can you actually buy the insurance through this group or they recommend?
We buy it through them, they set the, the premium rates, and it's an anthem, Blue Cross, insurance. Coverage, but it's through the Maine Municipal Employee Health Trust, they negotiate essentially those and set the rates for the members. Uh, electricity rates, the graph, the chart I have in there, I believe as of yesterday is irrelevant. Think I heard that the PUC voted down that rate, right, change or that rate structure, that was proposed by CMP. There are. Increases on the supply side, um. Believe it was, you know, January and June of this year, they plan on changing, increasing the rates, um, on the supply side. And I don't, we don't, I don't know at, at the moment how much, um, but just sharing. I mostly put that in there when I saw that the CMP made the proposal and that the, the headlines were reading. Could be as much as. Seventeen or thirty bucks on, for the average household per month, and say, well, what's that mean for groups like us, we're not an average household, the rates we pay aren't the household rates. And, and so I was concerned what that might look like, but hopefully that stayed mostly in check. Police chief search is underway, um, hope and plan is to have someone, um. Committed by the end of the year, hopefully here by the end of the year. And so we haven't negotiated that, some of that contract priced yet with them for salary. And I think we're at ninety-four thousand in the budget this year, and we advertise eighty-seven, five to one hundred thousand. And, and so that's. To be determined at this point. Um, we did increase, uh, through the town meeting on the fifteenth of October, the, that position in particular. Um, to afford it, the main per special plan, uh, right now, all the employees are in Plan AC, it's called, through main piers. Uh, which allow retirement after twenty-five years with full benefit, uh, but if you're under the retirement age that was set by main piers, there's a penalty for early withdrawal. Um, in the law enforcement, uh, first responders in particular, in law enforcement, EMS, fire, and they have these options to join these special plans that afford twenty or twenty-five-year no-age retirement plan. And it's the, typically the average of the three highest years of earnings, and depending on which option or plan option you're in, it's either fifty percent or two-thirds. And, and that drives, of course, the, the shared contribution of the employer and employee to contribute each pay period. And so the, the board, the town voted to change just the non-union police positions, which is effectively the police chief. Uh, to be more in line with what all of the surrounding in, in state, for the most part statewide, law enforcement agencies are. And they can consider the union folks at the next CBA negotiation. Union folks at the next C B A negotiation. So that's a minor, you see there, it's about a three percent increase, um, for that particular position, um, for next year.
To clar- clarify for anybody, the chief is not part of the union. So his, his pay increases are separate from anything that's not under the union contract.
Uh, the cemetery contract is up, um, this month, and so we, last time it came up, we tried to get, I gotta get it out, um. But that should be set before we get into the budget process, that. These contracts reset, they typically come with an increase, um, whether it's the same incumbent company or another one. Uh, they know the starting point from the last year, so, and most folks have been hired because costs go up. So we don't know that number yet, but that's expected to change. Um, and the other thing that I know is, um, there is a bill in place, I don't, I assure, it doesn't. Seem like it's probably going to impact us a whole lot, I haven't looked at the R V. Excise fees, and but R V X I's, which. Is, I think it's just a motor, the R V camper motor homes is what they were targeting with that legislation, um, would would. Change the formula in which towns have to charge excise fee on campers. To something more in line with like boats, where it's by footage rather than by M S R P. And so for towns that register a lot of campers, that's going to be a big loss for them, um, at the, at the moment, the way it's projected. Um, on the fee structure, it's, you know, they described it as pennies on the dollar essentially, and so for those towns that have a lot of those registrations, it'll. It'll be noticeable. But other than that, you know, if there's anything in that share before the meeting, but those are the things I I know are kind of propelling. And I don't know.
Last night? Last night, we were advised by the ambulance service. Uh, the, the rates of damage got are going to go down eight point four percent.
They're gonna go down?
At a surplus of two hundred twenty five thousand, and since they had no capital plan and they have capital needs. The board, uh, voted to split the amount and give two hundred twelve thousand back to the towns. With exception of Edgecombe, because that's a contract, uh, it's not in the interlocal. And so we get the hundred twelve was spread across the towns and ours was eight, one, one of the highest reductions, eight point four percent.
Yeah.
There's something in the wind that they may uh, alter the allocation, uh, or expenses going forward then. Turn to a formula that we, we didn't like and change, uh, so.
Coming up on a five year cycle, right, has it been five?
Yeah, well, no, it's just, they're, I don't know, it's another year and a half, I think, so they're, I don't know if they're. Intending to have this go into effect after that period or. Right now, but we're not gonna like it, let's put that.
Pre- previously, the amount that that the a town page, the C L C. Is a formula made up of, uh, town assessment. The call rate, the number of times that the ambulance service gets called within. Missions, Gemma Scotta. And there's a third component.
Population.
And 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 the factor of the population. That had been the case for a long time, the big news, uh, a year ago, two years ago.
Two and a half, twenty two.
Yeah, was they were changing that formula. To uh, simply be be based on on, uh, well, importantly, not be factored in. The call rate. And that matters to us.
Well, the state assessment is what they set it at. Think all the member towns and their state in in the, the proportion of your representation of those towns, uh, but they use the state valuation as the base mark.
But that, that is good news, because the call rate means that if somebody from Bristol, a Bristol taxpayer. Is in Damascada and calls an ambulance. The Damascada taxpayers. Are assessed for that.
Most of the calls are in Damascada because we're service.
We're service that are community. Damascada to.
And they come and take advantage of services like the hospital, whatever, they're up here for a lot of reasons and, uh, on the call basis alone, we, we were. Paying line share. So, uh, we changed that to make it on a tax basis and, uh, it's been working real well for us. Some of the towns like South Bristol and Bristol not have because they have high tax.
Yeah, I mean, they were, they.
But the thing is, we had hours and days of debate, the problem is the ambulance service doesn't. Is not able to gather the, the, uh. Residents address information at the time of a call, so that we know where the call is, who's associated with, and especially with. People that are out of town or whatever visitors. So without knowing. Where the resident is, you can't, you know, push that back to those respective towns. And there was no solution for that problem, so that's why we came up with that formula.
What's that?
I'll ask you later.
Days of debate, believe.
Oh, we'll trust you to keep debating, Tom, as the C L C rap for us.
So that, that, that potential change in the formula was put in front of us last night. Uh, uh, last night was a ambulance service, uh, a budget meeting. Uh, to, to which we were invited, uh, a selectman and a budget committee member from each of the towns. Um. And they, they gave us a rewrite of the, the agreement.
A local agreement.
Local agreement, a several page rewrite, uh, that I haven't looked at yet, uh, Tom got a chance to look at it and discovered on the back page. Was this thing about? Going back to the old formula.
Which would substantially raise our amount, you know, forty thousand, probably fifty thousand. Easily.
What's driving that, the unhappiness of South Bristol Bristol?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, they, they pushed back pretty hard on mine.
If you're not aware, they're both over a billion dollars in valuation and Damascada is, I think, at. Uh, yes, of course, six something, it'll be seven hundred thousand next year. Um, they're, they're, so we're, we're the second lowest, I believe, by valuation of the member community that's C L C. Um, but have the highest call volume, um, so that's part of that challenge and. Um, our calls respond are very quick and some of the other towns aren't, by virtue of where they're set up, um, by any fault of. Um, so I can definitely appreciate where there's a challenge and how to clearly assess each town's.
But I, I, I felt the view I just showed now in, in, in view of this last page. That Andy was showing us those, those sorts of things, where we have little to no control, uh, that's not on the list.
Or us, because we're gonna fight it.
And that's, yeah, uh.
Just to note, I was surprised to find out, a friend of mine had an emergency call. From Schooner's home, and so she ambulanced over the miles. She ended up not having a critical situation. And they released her and then. Um, the bill for going back was a completely different price. Because it was no longer an emergency ambulance transport. And it would have been advantageous to have. So to speak, me go over and just take her across the street, but it is two different rates of billing. To ambulance you over and then if you need the ambulance as a taxi to get back.
Personally, don't, don't misunderstand, I personally am, 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 I have a great deal of respect for the. C L C ambulance and, and, and they're so, so very, very glad that they're there. Uh, it's surely a benefit to us, but that doesn't mean that we can't complain about. Costs, about the cost. I mean, so, uh, no idea, no idea where that, I know.
Uh, the last two blue sheets I, um, provided, uh, actually talking to Karen today, I. She's talked about the kind of the distribution of the tax amounts and where they go, um, it does kind of show your tax bill, they're not in a pie chart. Um, so these two sheets here, the first one, the tax rate calculation form, that's. Pretty much a state document that shows how we come to identifying what the mill rate is and. Um, all the inputs there are kind of those darker gray boxes, um. If for those that are interested, the backside of that is kind of a summary of the two fiscal years, the one that F Y twenty six were in. And in the previous, just to show simply kind of like where the changes were between those two years, um, a little less in the weeds, um. And so you can kind of just see a comparison from one year to the next. I don't typically, I don't have that as we're going through the budget process, because I don't know the school number, I don't, the county number we'll know by then, but I don't have the school number. Um, the TIF is value is, the assessed value, the TIF is one thing, but it's driven by that number at the top there on line nine, it's driven by the mill rate, or you don't know until the end. And the overlay, the last line, line twenty three, that's. Kind of determined based on a recommendation of, uh, assessors agent and determined by the select board, that also has an impact on the middle rate. And so, oh, you know, the biggest thing there is if we're going through the budget process, we don't know exactly what the mill rate is going to be. Uh, until you do your commitment, which is typically July or August, when all the numbers are there and ready, town meetings have been approved, until the budget's actually approved, you just don't. Know, um, exactly what it is, um. But that's the sheet that we end up kind of having to fill out and. Support, just kind of again shows you the overview, the pie chart is again simply of the amount that's being appropriated and. It was broken out of your tax bill, where that goes.
I think it might be important for the budget committee and the select board as well to pay close attention to the school budget because. If you notice, Jefferson, Nobleboro pushed back significantly. And reduce the cost of their budgets, um, so. There's always that possibility, if you look at the pie chart, you can see it's a big number.
So then again, just so, and for case anybody doesn't understand, uh. The budget that we'll be working on is the municipal appropriation. What, which in fact only represent about a third of the. Of the tax bill. And the other two thirds, the, the big piece of it being the, the school budget, uh, and, and, uh. And its impact upon the, on the tax rate. Nevertheless, uh, tax rate complaints. Go to that counter out there. Right? School superintendent's office, if they go over there, okay, so be mindful of what's going on there because you will get blamed for it.
One, one thing we added, sorry, one thing we added to the website this year, for those that were asking the question, you know. Just put it in a simple Google sheet spreadsheet, and so folks wanted to know exactly their tax bill amount, how that's divvied out to each department. They can go online, put their tax amount they were billed for, and they can see that, you know, five hundred dollars goes to the highway department and six hundred dollars goes to the police department, so for those that were. We, we, sometimes we get that, sometimes it's just, they're upset, which is fair, um, but there are a few that just want to know where does it actually go. Helpful, other few people know that, and that's nice people to see.
Yeah, I was just curious, so how much interaction is there between you, Andy, and the school committee and? The, the select board and are there any joint?
We're just, we're just voting citizen, yeah, right, just like, yeah.
So if people care, they should go to school board meetings.
Yeah. And we typically don't get, the, the school budget doesn't come in until when, it's late. Yeah, I think they usually set it, and. So different process, and this year isn't be different again, uh, I think it's usually like May. When they do their district meeting. So by then, we've gone, you know, our, our process, we're, as you say on the calendar, um, because of. How we vote, it's half the, but half the warrants at the polls, and you need to have those ballots available about thirty days prior to the June election. You need so many days for the printer to be able to print and get them to us to then make available, we're first, second weekish of April. Uh, our, our hard cutoff to get to the printers is like April. End of their twelfth or somewhere in that, I'm glad we're getting, somewhere in that, that's third week of April, that's a hard deadline, even then, we're probably playing, paying a priority fee for it. Um, to get it here in time. And the schools is just a different process and they're, after our. Review and setting of our warrant, do they then do theirs, I think they usually start their public meetings, I think in March. Um, and then go into April with theirs.
We're in the same boat with the water sewer district too.
That one's a calendar year, I believe.
This is your price, take it, leave it.
And they have, yeah, I mean, potentially, I guess, if you don't go to the meetings, yes, I mean, they have their own meetings.
So the school board, I mean, whatever the school board, whatever their board comes up with, that's what you're blessed with.
Yeah, the select board and the budget committee don't, you know, have, I mean, that's individually going there or call for a meeting, if it's to a more formal level. Um, to work together on knowing when there's a big increases, maybe that, you know, a new facility for the town isn't the same year, they're gonna build a new school kind of thing. Okay, let's try and stagger some of those increases if we can on a big, big scale.
Um, the water and sewer people do have, at least, I've noticed, they have public meetings. So if you have questions or.
Well, the school board does too. But whatever they come up with that final decision, they presented to us the budget media and presented to select one, said, that's our budget. You don't get a chance to negotiate that budget.
For the, for the water and sewer, any rate changes you might know do have to get approved by the P U C. And so they did just do that, uh, last year, I believe, I saw the hydrant fees too, like, yeah. Water went up a lot last year, unless it's F Y twenty six, I think it was a seventy thousand dollar increase of last year and.
Hydrants went up a hundred thousand.
Right, so that went through P U C and a public process and the, you know, there was public comment available, the P U C, um, ended up approving it based on. All the things that were provided to them, but they, part of their issues, they went so long before they, since they added.
No incremental increases for forever, then we're gonna do it now, but once. Yeah.
Did we add a lot of? Fire extinguishers?
We did.
We, we added, um, proportionally just as many as Newcastle had in that timeframe, and so the distribution. Fosher between the two towns, New Cap, or Nobleboro is included in the district, but they don't have any hydrants there, so truly just the two towns that are sharing the hydrant. In the, the district, um, the way the rules, the P U C work is the thirty, they say, they told us thirty percent of the. Revenues must come from the hydrants. So you take the, take the million dollar budget, thirty percent of whatever revenues needed to be collected to cover the costs. Must come from hydrants, and so that kind of starts, and then from there, depending on the two, the two towns, it gets divvied up based on the number of hydrants we have.
What's the ballpark price of a hydrant?
To install?
And maintain, or?
I have no idea.
Just wondering.
Yeah, the fee we pay includes all of that, the availability of water and the maintenance and winter clearing and.
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the charge, the charge isn't, isn't to cover the cost of the hydrant, it's to cover the cost of the water that goes through it. If, if we add a hydrant. From your house. Our cost that year does not go up. Right, if we take hydrant out from in front of your house, it does not go down. It's based, the cost that we pay is a formula based on their cost to operate. Not on how many hydrants we have.
It does get, it does get divvied up within the two towns, you know, there are two towns that have the hydrants, and so depending on how much each town has. Uh, in, you know, how many, I mean, it's about seventy five percent are in Damascada. Thereabouts. I forget the count in the budget book, if someone.
Is somewhere, we did it, yeah. On the hydrant page.
But it was, yeah, the moral of the story, it was a unpleasant surprise from last year's budget that we hadn't, nobody had any control over, you couldn't vote against it, it didn't matter.
Well, they said all those hydrants, and when they did the water line, I'll back my, I'll, I'll just stamp, but every five hundred feet is there.
I mean, that wasn't the biggest driver for the cost, it was the rates, um, because I think the way Scott explained it, there was just as many proportionally added in Newcastle as well in that timeframe. And so we still have the same distribution, um, but their costs for operating went up in, you know, in general, so that's.
Yeah, but that was a mandated rule, though, the state said they had to be every five hundred feet, wasn't it?
Uh, I don't remember who mandated it.
Thing I was talking to Scott when they put them in. Why would we put too many on back matter, we've never had.
So what drives that is the length of hose typically on a truck or the longer the length of the hose you have, I mean. It can impact the delivery of water on fire, so they, that's part of the reasoning and the spacing that they have and. I don't think the five hundred or a thousand, somewhere in that ballpark, because, you know, that's about as much hose you want to lay out in between essentially, or you away from. Um.
Yeah, that's a standard.
More houses, the potential for more hydrants, so, um, they'd have to expand the water lines to the new developed areas, if they're working within the footprint already there. Established by the hydrant line from others, and. It probably is. Um, acknowledging time, um, I don't know if anyone, if there's anything that is like front and center that, you know, is based on last year budget books, like. The information we provide, um, just. Fair opportunity now to offer the things that would be helpful. The fair opportunity now to offer the things that would be helpful to see in addition to what we've been providing. Um just to get us start to think about how we can pull it together before your next meeting. And certainly being burning or any reactor or things from last year that say, hey, I wish we could do this differently and.
I think from, I won't speak the whole war from our perspective, I mean, I I think the budget books uh that they're progressing, I mean, you, they're evolving, I should say, and and um. Clearer and better, I mean, the staff does a great job putting these together, so I'm talking the knocking thing there, I think, I don't know if there's, if it's an improvement, I don't have an idea for it. But generally, it comes from here, from the staff, and we go, oh, thank you.
Yes.
Maybe the new people will pass it around so they can see it.
I know, um I'd offered, um it's online, and I did offer, and very early, I know both requested copies, so they have those.
Yeah, and you got, you're just there at the December meeting.
It's a lot of pages. I printed some of them.
Any, any, both any questions on the lower? Yeah, I do, I can, we started earlier every year and.
The last thing we want is to give the February when we put all that effort into printing and say, well, I wish we had this, like, well, so I want to offer that opportunity now, if there's things we know we want to have included. To view and and look at, um you know, we could do that leading up to, and and the way we've been doing it, by the time you get to your presentations, it should have been all in February. You've got one, effectively one month to be able to go through and really dig in, and they talk about it, and to me, that just doesn't seem like it. No, it's not enough time, it's not enough time, yeah, and it goes, it goes quick. So there's more, more stats, I mean, police departments write with data, if there's. Question about how many receipts we do in a year, I mean, there's there's there are numbers and and performance things we could be looking to try and provide you, if that would be helpful in one of those things.
Oh, sorry.
Um I do remember um during the budget committee meetings, it would have been, I think, a little helpful if the non-negotiable. Line items were highlighted in some way, we spent a lot of time having conversations about things that we had no control over. And so I know you had to defend a lot of things that were, they just were.
Indefensible.
Right, well, not indefensible, but there was a lot of time you. You weren't gonna have an impact, like the insurance costs, so like the.
We had, Mary, we had similar conversations on the board side where we we, and we did kind of individually, but we could actually pull out stuff that like. This is, like, this is contracted, this is P U C, the the, you know, and and, yeah, because it does, it's it's surprising how many things. And there might be an existing contract or continuation of the contract, or things that are driven by outside sources that you you cannot, you know, you can.
And that would, I think, make our meetings a little more efficient.
Yeah, I I would say that highlighting it, to my mind, is not going to. To eliminate your your right to ask questions. Make observations on something. It's it's just that when you look and you see that it's highlighted, you can say, you keep a big sigh and say, okay.
But you only get thirty seconds for the ones that are none.
Does that sound like a bureaucrat for a minute here? Uh in terms of emails. Uh the the lost states that we, that's that a a an email conversation. Uh is is a meeting. I know, I don't think Andy always agrees with me, but as far as I'm concerned, one person, no one person is fine. Okay, but if Andy sends out a a an email or something, or if you have an observation, gonna have to ask that you please. Send those questions or those comments to Andy. Right, and he will see to it that. We know what's going on, uh if you do a reply or it's a violation of the the public right to know law, because. The people we represent can't. See what's.
So we replied back to Andy.
I I might just offer, if they include Dick as the chair as well, that would be helpful. I don't see it, he sees a picture, but as the chair of the budget committee, you know, I think both of us being aware of those would be helpful.
Yeah. You have a list of all the emails for the year, and will you share that with us tomorrow or next day or something?
Well, they're on the web.
Um I don't think I put all of your emails on the website, I think I updated the list, so I think you're all on the budget committee page now. Um but the email that went out November tenth, um should have everyone in there, but I can just do a simple person and email thing, that's helpful. Anything else?
Any any comments or anything we've missed?
Thank you. I want to say thank you to Richard, yes, thank you for for one more. No, but sincerely, I think we are genuinely all very.